Okay, I appreciate your patience with us. We need a motion from the board to reconvene open session. Thank you, Angie, second Beth. Any questions, concerns about that? Okay, all in favor of reconvening? Thank you very much. Thank you for joining our meeting this evening. It's nice to see you all here. If you would stand with me, we'll say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item of business this evening is to certify the election results that were issued by the verification board. We need to know, shall the Board of Education of the reorganized School District R3 of Jefferson County, Missouri be authorized to eliminate fully the sales tax reduction in its opening levy for school purpose, the Proposition C rollback, as provided under Section 164.013 RSM? The vote that took place on April 2nd for the Hox rollover waiver had 2,423 yes votes and 935 no votes. So, that was awesome. So, I need a mo- (applause) I need a motion to approve the election results.
I make a motion, second.
Thank you, all. And they're all voting, second. Pick one. Okay, we also need a motion to approve the election results for board candidates. We had two candidates elected. Oh, no, we did have a vote. Sorry, I jumped the guns. Okay. I was excited, but it passed. All in favor, I'm gonna back up, of certifying the election results for the rollover waiver. Raise your hand. Okay? Sorry. Now, we would like to certify the election results for the two three-year term candidates. We had Rob Cruz with 1,766, Renee with 1,987. Those were the two candidates that were voted in. And Brandy Galloway had 1,348. I make a motion. Thank you, Angie, to approve these results. Say that again. Jane, will let Jane have it? Sorry. Okay. All in favor of approving these election results? Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, if our two new board members would step forward, we will give you the open office by our board secretary. Maybe to the side where we can see the camera still get you. Does it move? On the same side, yeah. Yeah, stay together, there you go. I like that, Beth. There you go. I love this one. There you go. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
And impartially-
And impartially-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
-of school director.
Of school director.
In and for the School District R3-
In and for the School District R3.
County of Jefferson-
County of Jefferson.
State of Missouri-
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
According to law-
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.[284.81][284.81](applause) Welcome back, we missed you. Okay, Dr. Isaacson is going to be assuming the duties of the temporary chairperson for this next election of the board.
All right. Board policy directs that the board shall organize by the election of a president and vice president. The board shall enter, shall elect treasurer. The treasurer may or may not be members of the board. The superintendent will serve as temporary chairperson to conduct the election of the president in accordance with Board Policy BCA and Missouri constitutional articles. So unless the board objects, the process for electing a board president will proceed as follows. I shall open the floor for nominations. I shall call three times for nominations. A second will be required for each nomination. After the third call for nomination, at which time if there are none, I shall ask for a motion to close nomination. A member of the board shall move to close nominations. If seconded, this will require two-thirds majority for passage. After nominations have closed, members of the board may vote one time for any one of the nominees. The candidate receiving the largest number of votes, plurality but not necessarily majority, will be elected. If there is a tie between two more nominees, those nominees who did not tie for the highest number of votes will be eliminated from consideration. The board will vote again on only those candidates who tied during the previous vote. The person receiving the highest number of votes, plurality but not necessarily majority, will be elected. Does any board member object to this process? If not, the floor is not open for nominations for the office of President of the Hillsborough R3 School District Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Lisa Walker.
Second. Ms. Hyden. Seconded by Rob. Call of nominations for the president of the Hillsborough R3 School District Board of Education. Final call for nomination for the office of president for the Hillsborough R3 School District Board of Education. The nominees for president, Ms. Lisa Walker. Take a vote.
Close nominations.
Oh, can I get a motion to close nominations?
Second.
One second for us. A motion was made to cease and that, all in favor of Ms. Walker being elected president of the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education. Please raise your hand. Congratulations.
Okay, we'll continue on then with officer elections. We'll start with the vice president. Do I have any nominations for the-
I have a nomination.
Thank you. Do I have any other nominations? Do I have a second for them?
I have a second.
Thank you, Jane. Any other nominations for vice president? Last call. Okay, I need a motion then to cease nominations for vice president. Thank you, John. Second. Thank you. Okay, we have one nomination, so a motion then, or a vote, sorry, to vote on Beth Petrie as vice president. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The last office is the treasurer, so we need a nomination for the office of treasurer. Thank you very much. Renee Saharsky. And a second by Jane. Any other nominations for treasurer? Last time to give a nomination. Okay, I need a motion then to cease nominations. Thank you, John. And a second, thank God. Okay, all in favor of electing Renee Saharsky as treasurer? Very good. Okay, congratulations to you as well. All right, so we'll move on then to special recognitions. The first recognition this evening is about the MSTA Jefferson County Region Awards and their classroom project awards. Every year, MSTA for the Jefferson County Region Awards, 10 $100 Classroom Project awards. This year, there were over 30 applicants and three were awarded to the Hillsborough R3 school teachers. Andrea Gosling, Cindy Heidert, and Stacy Morell each received $100 to support the implementation of a classroom project, so we congratulate those teachers. We'll move on then to high school. They have lots of good things to share with us, I believe.
Okay, we are, we would like to thank you for supporting us having a AAA Academy cohort. That'll actually make us a little nervous, so we're thrilled that we can announce who our cohort will be made up of this year, or next year. For the 2019-20 Academy of Arts cohort, those are the students who will take dual credit both at Hillsborough and at Jefferson College and then graduate with either an Associate of Arts degree probably the week before they graduate from high school, or they'll at least have 42 hours. And those people are Elizabeth Bartlett, Mackenzie Coffey, Annabelle Cuddy, Caitlin Hane, Emily Hosey, Brianna Langrier, Haley Massey, Angelina Snyder, Emma Tilly, and Megan Weaver. So we're very excited for them. And then on March 16th, we had 11 students selected to participate in the Jefferson County Honor Band. They rehearsed and performed that day with the guest clinician, Kim Shelley of Clayton High School. And those students selected were Madison Ginge on flute, Samantha Berenheim on flute, Autumn Wenslet clarinet, Allison Dietrich clarinet, Chris Hollingsworth baritone sax, Miranda Lee trumpet, Logan Howard trombone, Peter Moravec trombone, Connor Shelton baritone, Brian Hayes tuba, and Jeremy Lovier percussion. On April 3rd, the symphonic and concert bands participated in the annual Amishia State Festival at Jefferson College. Symphonic band received an exemplary one rating and concert band received an outstanding two rating. On April 5th, the treble baritone, treble chamber, and a cappella choirs competed at Missouri State, at Missouri State Festival. We're proud to announce that every one of our choirs achieved an exemplary number one rating. That's awesome. And then last week, Emmy, or Amelia, as she's formerly known, but Emmy Signorelli was honored as the Hillsborough R3 Optimist Youth Appreciation Week Honoree from Hillsborough. Emmy was attended a lunch with Mrs. Sarah Dix on April 11th and represented our high school among the Optimist Club and representatives from the nine area high schools. And then teaching cadets from career pathways and teaching practical courses are teaching junior to admit to junior to our kindergarten and first graders. The program hasn't been in our school district for many years, so it's very exciting for us. And next year, they plan to take that program to various grade levels. That's exciting. Michael Cox headed to speech and debate state tournament in Springfield on April 13th, and we have not had anyone make it to the state level in speech and debate for a long time, so we were really proud of Michael. And then Hillsborough staff and students volunteered for Jefferson County Drug Court trivia night at the Mississippi River Eagles in Crystal City on April 5th and proceeds go to assist drug court participants with transportation to and from treatment as well as other necessities. And then we would like to recognize the National Junior Honor Society Kids and Savannah Wheaton who wrote out and addressed 150 postcards for the rollback waiver campaign. We would also like to recognize some of the freshman National Junior Honor Society kids who went above and beyond the 20 hours or required community service hours. They really worked hard this year and dedicated themselves to the project. Matt Abel had 154 hours, Cadence Arnold with 52 hours, Kelsey Johnson with 118 hours, Madeline Murray clocks 90 hours, Flynn Perry 201 hours, Haley Schmidt 66 hours, and we're super proud of these outstanding National Junior Honor Society members. And just so you know, the National Junior Society is comprised of eighth and ninth grade, so that's why I am celebrating them. And then a local nonprofit, Endless Opportunities Worldwide, wanted to share how thankful they were to have the help and muscles of the Hillsborough football team as they helped them with a project for local disabled, for a local disabled veteran. They showed up early on a Saturday morning and moved the vet's family from their old house to the new home. They also carried all the boards and drywall into the basement so the volunteer contractors could begin the work of finishing the basement for the family. They definitely would not have gotten all that work done without them.
Thank you very much. That's a lot of good things going on. Next, we would like to recognize Coach Lucas and Mr. Moreno, I think, is going to give a little presentation.
Well, mine's really simple. He has to go over talking, but I'm just here to introduce Coach Lucas. What's really funny is some of the girls think they have to speak tonight because we sent them up and let them think that they had to speak, but then, you don't have to speak tonight, you're good. There's no speaking. You've probably heard them arrive tonight when they got here while you guys were in closed session.
We did.
They're an ambitious, fun group, but Coach Lucas has some things he'd like to say about them and recognize them on their trip to the final four this fall. Coach Lucas gotta come up here.
And they were supposed to be in uniform too, that, I'm just kidding. First, I'd like to introduce, and I don't, you want to see another?
Sure.
Jules Johnson. Kelsey Boyd. Amber James. Ellen Nichols. Alana Johnson. Bailey Shuman. Haley Ginn. Emily Mudd. Ellie Edwards. And Reagan George. And I, and we have about a handful that, I think a couple had soccer games, a couple had work, and so they just were unable to make it. And so, but this group was a pretty amazing group. We started out by winning districts against, we beat Perryville in district, or, uh, we beat-
DeSoto.
DeSoto, sorry. Beat DeSoto in the district championship, and then we beat Perryville in the sectional. And then we went on to play Notre Dame-St. Louis in the quarterfinal and won that for the trip to the final four. And so it was just, it was a pretty amazing trip just to get to go there. You know, we went there hoping to win some games. We ended up 0-2, but you know, finishing fourth place in class three was still pretty special. You know, this is a group that, I mean, they just kinda, they went out and had fun. They, you know, were kind of a bunch that, you know, they didn't like to take things serious at times, but that kinda kept them loose. Gave me a lot of gray hairs, but you know, it was a fun group. And so we had a lot of fun for the final four. Would've been nice to, you know, win a, win a championship, but just to make it there was pretty special. You know, we have, I guess we have six seniors and four of them are going on to play college softball, so that's pretty, pretty special to see. You know, and so, I mean, we still, we have girls that are still, you know, in the record books. You know, a few years ago, we set a state record. We still have, some of our girls are still, you know, finding spots in the state record book, and so it's pretty, pretty amazing just to see some of the things they do. You know, I'd also like to thank all of you guys for the support we got throughout the season. The community was awesome with everything that they did, and so I just want to say thank you. Appreciate, you know, honoring this, this is awesome, you know, just for them to get to come out and, you know, experience this. Thank you.
And Coach, we would like to recognize your efforts to present you with the board ballot.
I didn't, it was all of them, but- Thank you.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.
You don't wanna talk? Anybody wanna talk?
No.
They're better at softball than they are talking.
Yeah, you're right.
Thanks, girls. Okay, we'd also like to hear from Mandy Alley, who was the chairperson for the Hox rollover waiver committee. If she'd come forward, she has some little recognitions and an overview to share with us this evening. Do you like a chair? We'll get you a chair. Usually there's a chair there. We just forgot.
Good evening, thank you for having me this evening. My name's Mandy Alley, I was the committee chair for the Hox rollback waiver committee, steering committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. It was my pleasure. We met six times between February 11th and March 26th. Our committee was made up of teachers, staff, community members of about 15 to 20 people. We have plenty of participation from teachers, administrators, staff, and many of the school board members here, I think everybody with the exception of maybe one, was here for those six meetings or participating in some other form. We were able to put together some subcommittees such as advertising, communications, fundraising, voter contact, and a door-to-door committee. With that, we accomplished two community forums that we held here in the Learning Center Building that was open to the community where Dr. Isaacson spoke and addressed the community, gave them, gave them all the facts about the rollback waiver to educate them. I think the biggest thing was to make sure that those teachers, the staff, and the community were all on board and all educated. It was, it looked like in the beginning it would be a tough thing to pass. Of course, we came out on the bright side of that, so I think that was mainly due to our meetings and to our community forums and the education that we put out to the public. Dr. Isaacson and myself and Ms. Walker and a few other people, we met with groups outside of the rollback waiver committee such as Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, went and had coffee with some of the local groups in town just to educate them. They were voters and alumni of Hillsborough School. We met with Wright Tree Property Owners Association at their meeting to educate them because there were many voters that were coming out of the Wright Tree area. Mrs. Kathy Freeman organized a Paint the Town Blue, and that was, I think, very impactful on the community, seeing the kids and the teachers and the staff all out there on Friday evening. Unfortunately, Saturday was a rain out, but just the one evening, I think, really made a statement to our community that everybody here was on board. So we had the door-to-door committee that went door-to-door. So many of the people in the program, community members, teachers, and staff, and our committee people went door-to-door, knocking on doors. We took the voter registration list, we split it up, and we went door-to-door. So most people in our community received a knock on the door with information and facts and just a friendly, here we are, if you have any questions, and we would ask for your support. So because of all of that, we ended up with, like you said earlier, 2,423 yes votes and 935 no votes, which passed with 72 percent, thank goodness. We also raised about $1,311 and will have approximately $200 left over that our committee has voted to donate to Project Prom this year. So that is it as far as the rollback waiver committee. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure to work with everybody. I'm happy that it passed. I have six children in Hillsborough School District, two that have graduated, two that are graduating this year, and two more to come, so I'm happy that their quality of education will remain the same.
Well, we thank you for all of your leadership efforts, and we would like to give you a board ballot this evening. Thanks, Mandy. Lots of good things all around. We appreciate everybody's hard work and helping our students achieve great things. We'll move on then to visitors that have signed up to address the board this evening. We have three that have signed up. I just wanted to give some clarification to those three visitors. You will be allowed three minutes. We'll ask you to come up and sit here at the, at the table. Please limit your comments to topics that are appropriate for the board. It's possible that I may interrupt you if comments stray or go into a subject matter that should not be discussed in open session. The Missouri sunshine law limits the ability of the board members to respond to your comments, so consequently, it is unlikely that the board will engage in a discussion with you this evening. We may follow up with you at another time or discuss among ourselves the issue later. So our first visitor is Audrey Day, so she can come to the front. And I'll give you a little hand signal when you're close to your board. Okay?
Good evening. I'm just here on behalf of NEA just to discuss some insurance issues that we have, we know that that is on the agenda tonight, consent agenda. And so previously, years past, we've had multiple meetings to discuss insurance, and this year, we really only just had the one in December where we talked about the wellness and how everybody was gonna have to get the fiscals in our same year. So we were surprised to see it already on the agenda. Policy GBB of staff involvement and decision-making mandates at the channels of the intercommunication of ideas among staff will be communicated to, which will be communicated to the board, so we were just wanting to know, obviously we can't answer, but why an insurance decision is being made before our negotiations and the meetings that Dr. Isaacson's gonna be having with staff in the next two weeks. And then also, we know that there's an insurance committee made up of the superintendent and members of MSTA and NEA, and we just haven't reviewed those insurance policies and made a recommendation with our whole group, so we were just concerned about that. So we know that that's the process that's been followed in previous years, and we're just curious as to why that's not being followed this year.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we also have Sandy Modulin. Welcome.
I came, I come before the board tonight. As many of you know, Mrs. Tomacek had a very long teaching career here at Hillsborough as a primary school, and her final class was the 2006-2007 school year in which she retired, and I didn't think, I was gonna be emotional about my daughter graduating. Her last class will graduate this May, and so they will have a senior breakfast on the 20th in which, for her class, many of the students are still here, and so we would like to find a way for them to be able to feel as a collective group together on that day since their teacher cannot be here. So we would like to place a plaque in her honor and her memory somewhere at the primary school, somewhere to be decided on collectively with the primary school principal and/or the board or the maintenance department. The plaque would be made of granite, and I do have an example of just something, it was just really an honor and memory of her, her teaching tenure from 1976 to 2007 with love and appreciation from her 2007 kindergarten class, which is now the class of 2015. So I will leave that with you, and if it is approved, just let me know so that I can order that plaque and have it, and then have some communication with Kathy Freeman with regards to how to let those students know that are still here in our district that morning of what we plan on doing so that any of those students would come to that senior breakfast and participate in that. So I will leave.
We'll be in touch then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our third visitor is, is- And our third visitor is Eddie Schultz. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Hi, my name's Eddie Schultz. I'm the president of Midwest Glass Enters. About a month and a half ago, there was an open bid process for the window film process. There was two out of three dealers that worked, three M. dealers, one was not. And the, I don't know if the project has been awarded or not, but if it has, two of the three 3M dealers were not awarded it. Our company, Midwest Enters, was the little bidder at the time, with $129. The reason I'm addressing this is unfortunately, it's becoming a very commonplace where the 3M window film is supposedly being installed, but continually being misrepresented, and it's not actually 3M. We are working with several projects, religious organizations in the city of St. Louis right now where 3M window film was supposed to have been installed, and it was not. I don't know that this is going to happen or not, but I do have in writing from 3M that the one bidder that was closest to us, which is not a 3M dealer, that 3M will not warranty any of their work or any of their products for this project. We take this very seriously. We don't feel entitled to any business and understand little bidder wins if they win. How that works. With that being said, we installed over 165,000 square feet across the United States last year of security film alone. It's the number one form for our business, and we take it seriously. Our clientele includes many other dealers in our industry who do not have the expertise to do this. We have clients this week in Memphis, Michigan, Indiana, Wisconsin. We were actually just awarded by the state of Wisconsin in our Wisconsin offices the balance of the contracts through the state-recognized co-op because they were having issues with the other suppliers. So, we were going to respectfully ask that the project has been awarded, that it be reconsidered under the grounds that 3M will not provide a warranty. We can provide you all of this documentation if need be. And if it does not, respectfully ask that we consider for that. Either way, we did phase one for your schools, for all of them. We appreciate your business, we take this very seriously. We thank you very much for the opportunity on this project. And we're doing this primarily, as I said, we've been brought in on many projects where it's being misrepresented and 3M having to go back and clean up. And so, they've been not forward in offering warranty stipulations that they have on this one, but because of the problems they're having, they brought it up. Did you need an documentation, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our visitors. So, we'll move on then to the action items on the consent agenda for the evening. I need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Second, John, and second, Angie. Any discussion on these items that were listed? Hopefully, you look through all of those. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote then. All in favor of approving these items on the consent agenda, raise your hand, please. All opposed?
Yes, thank you for questioning.
Thank you. Okay, let's get started with our reports for this evening. We'll start with facilities and grounds with Director Best.
Good evening, everyone. All right. Short month, congratulations. Couple things been going on this past short month. Everything, we did get the water issue finally worked on and fixed at the sports complex. I think we focused the attention last month with the fact of the broken line for the freezing. I think with the help of Megan and Ms. Moreno, I think we got everything worked out with the insurance company and so forth. Don't know the total bill, but I can tell you that it's just for the water damage part, it's about four grand. But we had a lot of equipment that was in that shed that got damaged. And I don't know if Ms. Moreno can tell you. I don't know what the dollar amount was of that, but insurance going to cover it all basically. Other than our deductible, so that's good news. But best news is we've got the silt to climb back up so we can use it for soccer and track needs and baseball games and so forth. So, that is up and running finally. Next thing we're looking at, of course, is I'm sure if you drove campus at all, potholes is a real problem, but we are working on that. We're making some headway, yes. Our biggest problem is, of course, we don't have the luxury right now because we don't have a vehicle that can actually hold the hot hatch, which we need brought in. So, we've been coordinating it with the city of Hillsborough. So, Cody with the city has been really great in helping with us with that. So, that's that combination we always love with our city and everything. So, between his men and us, we've been able to fill a few extra floors. So, it's been great. So, we're still working on it. We did spend about five, I did, about five hours a day. We put out an RFP that Dr. Isaac approved last week. So, we got that out in the making, and we got to sit and do a pre-bid walk today for about five hours and play every track and hole in the district now. But they're going to be working on that to get those numbers to us so we can see what that's going to do while breaking down by complex so we can actually see and decide what we want to do. But again, as y'all realize, it'll be a lot of money. So, but I will bring that to you hopefully at the next board meeting after we visit. So, so let's work out on that. The construction points that we've got going on, of course, is pretty well the elementary. They're all working on the upper sped area. It's coming along very well. We've got the framing up. PMI's coming in this coming week to get all the wiring where they need on the controls for the HVAC systems. And then after that, the drywall starts. So, we'll be breaking drywall in on Friday. They'll start some hanging, but not all of it on Friday. Monday, they'll be back in, work on them. So, yeah, the little schools, it's easy for them to do that. So, we'll make progress. Hopefully, we are planning to be done by June 30th. This is the date right now. Punch list will have to be completed in all the buildings. And go from there to make sure we got everything in order before we sign off and everything gets handed to the school district. At that time, there'll be a few more docs everybody will have to agree with, fully board, make sure, and then hopefully everything else will run smooth. So, that's where we add up. Intermediate, I think I brought this to you last month. The HRU Unit 8 is up and running finally. They'll bid, so air conditioning in the upper and lower floors, they'll like this this year. So, we got that. The only thing is, they don't like me, is they have ants, which we have problems with that. But we have worked with our pest control companies. They were coming in on some of these off days where there's no students around, and they're actually doing a sprite system for that. So, hopefully, we'll get better and better and more control of that one. So, Mother Nation always wins out, of course, sometimes. Primary's going along well with the teacher move. As you might know, we've got about 13, 15 teachers to move for summer school starts during June. So, Coby and Brant's have been working really hard over there. Teacher's been great helping us getting everything moved, which is good for us and them. So, it's been fairly smooth. We're basically, when we're doing this move, so you know, as we move them out and in different rooms, we are painting them and doing the floors, so it looks like a pretty well brand-new room almost for them. So, I think they already like that. Only part of them, of course, is taking everything down in the old room, putting everything back up while trying to cause a lot of issues trying to get children all taught. But they're doing a great job, so we thank them for helping us with the best. They'll work more, probably about 179. And we're working on summer project list, which I'll hand over to Dr. Isaac and Ms. Solbrant, probably hopefully by Tuesday so they can see the list. And then we'll start breaking down based on what this begins allows us to help with the financial part. And we'll go from there. No, not her fault. I just, we have to work with her because we have to be fair. Everyone has to be fair with this budget part, so that's what we're trying to do. But it's all gone fairly smoothly. In case you're looking at piles of dirt at the elementary and the junior high yet, that'll be gone here pretty soon. They'll be leveling all that ground out. And they'll be striping and finishing the curb on the backside by the gym area on Friday. So, the weather does well for us. Go over here tomorrow, but Friday's supposed to be good. So, they should all come in, set all their curbs, and get all that striping down behind the junior high now. So, that should be fine.
Good.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the technology part with Director Angel.
We had 136 work orders completed during this timeframe. We've been working with the architect on the new sped addition and the specs for technology. Barcom has completed the installation of the cameras at the primary, elementary, and junior high. We had to wait for the construction to be completed for them to get in and do their part. We installed organizers and delivered 220 Chromebooks to the buildings, and this is going to be very beneficial for map and ELC testing. We updated the elementary lab for map testing and ensured the Chromebooks were on the latest version. And map testing has officially begun, and I'll go with it so far, it's been pretty good.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. The financial report, we'll hear from Ms. Kim.
There's not a whole lot of change. Do you have it? Okay. There's not a whole lot of change, like I said before you just a few weeks ago. But as far as how we are trending our fund balances, I mean, you can see the lines from year to year. We are trending in the same direction. So, over the next few months, our balances will decline, but that's normal because we get all that tax revenue at the beginning of the year, beginning of calendar year, and it will steadily decline. And if you scroll down to that next one, this is our operating funds. And if you follow the purple line, you can see how our funds have dropped off, and that's because we have less money coming into our operating and more going into our debt service because that doesn't include our debt service money. But that's what we expected. So, you know, we're still following those same trend lines, so that's good. As far as the financials, I mean, prior year compared to this year, percent of budget, we're, I mean, we are right on track, so that's awesome. As far as revenue goes, I'm watching the state revenue streams right now pretty closely because there's a concern that the general revenue, like the overall state revenue, isn't going to come in quite as high as initially anticipated. There's a lot of tax laws that went into effect this year from several years ago from the legislative sessions, and that's affecting, we're seeing those results now. So, they're hopeful that after Tax Day yesterday, that they'll see some of that rectify itself a little bit. But I'm just watching them all real closely. Basic formula, proxy, classroom trust fund, they all kind of hinge on those general revenue numbers that we see. So, it's behind a little bit, but we'll keep watching that. They recalculated the state advocacy target, which is good. And because the calculation's less than the overall appropriation, so they're able to raise it a little bit, which is excellent, but still not where we hope they're looking. So, I'll just keep watching that, and I will update you and let you know. As far as expenditures go, everybody's kind of winding down on spending or we at least have purchase orders in place for anticipated spending. Other items I have on the agenda, we had budget meetings on Wednesday up in the intermediate library. I had a few new faces, so I went through a presentation on, you know, the things that are required of a budget. You probably don't heard my presentation once or twice. But the things that I have to include in the budget and the items that can change from year to year, the items that kind of stay the same. And then I gave all of the buildings their allocations, and they kind of worked on that a little bit. I started meeting with the departments. I met with technology yesterday, and then I'll just kind of go down the line of the meeting with everyone. If you have any questions as we move through the spring, just let me know. But I anticipate having that full document so at the next month's second meeting so that you have a month to look over it before we adopt it in June. Give you a lot of time to look at it. I will be putting out a banking services RFP in the next month because it's time to bid that out. So, or within the next couple of weeks by the end of the month. So, just look for that if you're interested. I'll come for the recommendation in May because we will get moving our order of checks and things like that if there's any changes. Any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our reports for this month. Oh, they do? I didn't think.
Well, maybe you could talk for a second if you want us to. I don't know.
If you want to.
We're pretty good at doing that. How can you top the cat pictures, you know, from last time? All right, so we'll move on then to unfinished business. We did have an item that we need to pull from the table. It has to do with the planners. So, I need a motion to pull from the table approving the purchase of planners for the elementary, intermediate, and junior high for 2019, '20 school year. Thank you, Beth. Unison. Now, we tabled this last month because of, we didn't know what was going to happen with the waiver issue, but that passed, so do you have any questions or concerns about this issue now? Okay? So, there is a motion to approve the purchase of these planners for the elementary, intermediate, and junior high. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, very good. So, that takes us to new business then. And the first item has to do with the health insurance, and we're going to defer to Dr. Isaacson. Information.
All right, a couple of different things along. These are our insurance rates. Prior to going in, I'm going to change my recommendation based on NEA's request and recommendation to table this. I have concerns with tabling a little bit because we have some deadlines in order to meet related to getting things in because our start of our school year or insurance year is July 1. And so, we start working backwards on getting everything in the computer as far as so that out of those checks for teachers and all staff at the end of June, that their kids' payments get taken out, or their own, et cetera, so they have an opportunity budget for the summer. Our open enrollment is scheduled for May 13th through the 24th while our staff is still here. So, these numbers need to be set prior to that. We've discussed about having that board meeting prior to that to establish these. In the absence, an email, I had visited with Ms. Day yesterday, and she had reviewed these and asked a question, "Why are these going up for the board today?" And the reason being for that is we've had a few things this school year that have kind of impacted how we traditionally have done things. So, I'd actually like to address some of the things that she brought up within her question at the beginning. Is House Bill 1413 impacted us as a district to where, if you remember, MSTA had requested and ran a certification election that they did in February. MSTA won the election, but they have not been certified by the State Board of Mediation. The reason they haven't been certified is a judge has issued an injunction against the State Board. So, we are left in the Hillsborough District in legal limbo is we are still under the guidelines of House Bill 1413. We cannot recognize any one organization over another or any organization whatsoever. So, as we go through negotiations this year, we will not have an MOU. There's no contract. We can't sign a contract according to that House Bill. That said, our purpose is to visit with Aldrich, which we start that tomorrow. That apprehension on that email, or visit, yesterday I visited with Ms. Day, NEA had sent an email to the district, and I had multiple conversations. People contacted me. I don't know what was in the email, but the message was, "Don't go to the meetings tomorrow. They've already made all the decisions regarding salary benefits." I want to be clear, that is not the case. That was the takeaway. So, people, even so, and I had questions like, "Why? I'm going to go to the meeting," and people were like, "Well, I'm not going to go." I had an email from a pair. "Are they even going to talk about pair of stuff?" And the answer is yes. Here's the issues related specifically to insurance. Because we've been operating in the absence of having those typical meetings that we would have, the one that we had in December, the insurance meeting, we had under the guise of, not guise, it was informational as to, hey, this is the increase that we're potentially facing in addition to our wellness that, prior to December. We weren't, and I, because I contacted Celinda multiple- We weren't, and I, because I contacted Celinda multiple times on that, as far as, I want to visit with the staff, we want to be transparent. This is, we know that these raises in insurance is coming for our district. In part, we have multiple things facing us as a district from an insurance standpoint. We have been extremely unhealthy as a district. We've had multiple incidents of cancer that have reduced in basically, we are costing our consortium much more than we were paying them. That puts us in a difficult space as far as where do we go from here to try and get coverage if we should leave our consortium? Is, we're not really in a marketable position. Is, and I'm going to share that with the meetings tomorrow, is if even within the district with these raises, is I contacted a local district, I won't name them, but they are not part of our consortium, they are a county school. They, to see, hey, just kind of, what are you guys looking at? And this is, and I think this is important for our staff to understand, this isn't a Hillsborough issue, is this is a school issue that we cannot keep up with.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? Could whoever has their phone on speaker turn it off? It's just, oh, it's yours, I'm sorry. It's so distracting, I didn't know what I was listening to. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Please continue.
Is, these were the numbers that were quoted, because this isn't just an our consortium thing, and I've been kind of looking at that, for, they're looking at doing away with their $500 corridor. Our buy-up recommended here, and I'll show you some numbers, is it's a significant increase for our employees with the board paying $316,000 to kind of buy that down. Our $500 recommended that before you and I would have been the employee paying $172. That's a significant amount for our employees. At this district, the $1,500 deductible is $267 for an employee. For the $2,500 deductible, which for our employees, if the board, based on the recommendation, if nothing would change when we do bring this back to the board, our buy-up for the base plan of the $2,500 deductible is $107, which is a $70 increase over this year. Their $2,500 deductible in that neighboring, our neighboring district is $183. Their base plan will be a $5,000 HSA, and they will contribute $19 a month to that, the district. To have the $3,000 HSA, which is what our HSA and we contribute $45 to, it will cost that employee, that teacher in that district, $53 a month with the district not contributing. These insurance things that we have going on are not Hillsborough issues, they're all around. One of the things that we're not able to do is, like Festus, they're paying 100%. I'll be right out front, we can't do what Festus does because we don't operate like Festus does. And that's one of the things that we have difficult decisions to make, our organizations have difficult decisions to make as far as, and that's kind of the question. As a district, we have to sit down and have that conversation as to what do we want Hillsborough to be? How do we want to run our business? We have a significant number of people greater than others in different areas as far as teaching staff. Some of the things that we are different is, we're similar like a Festus, we have four attendance center, or we have five, they have four. You know, because we have our makeup. That requires more counselors, two principals, an extra cafeteria staff, an extra librarian, extra librarian secretary. Your teachers are your teachers. In primary through third grade right now, our numbers are as such, when they are in high school, currently we have 1,130 kids in high school. The numbers in our kindergarten through third grade, when they're ninth through 12th grade in our high school will be 930 kids. That's a reduction of 200 kids in high school. But we haven't reduced our numbers as far as staff to meet that. But that's what our funding is based on. That said, that's okay, but what we need to do is, as a Hillsborough family and organizations, MSTA, NEA, is sit down and be like, no, we're okay with that. We are okay, we know that we're going to make less than a neighboring school district because we do things differently. Because we want to have extra support, we want to have more counseling staff, we want to have smaller class sizes. That's important to us. Because the reality is, we cannot do both. We don't have the funds to do both. And so, but that said, why I think we need to table this is, I haven't, I need to do a better job of communicating that and haven't had the opportunity to do that, and that's on me. So we will table that. And part of this is, we didn't even know if we're going to be able to do the $300,000 to buy it down in the absence of proxy. And so then we're sitting at, April 16th is here, I will tell you that I've gotten, and Ms. Gens, multiple, we are holding up the entire consortium. We need your numbers, we need your, are you, because we need to build this online enrollment. And so that is going to be what it's going to be. But to show, because it's important too, because when employees look at this, is, and to be transparent, this is what the recommendation is, and I put a little, if you throw the Google thing up, allow me to get up here, excuse me, because it gets confusing to, and I threw some numbers together, and I'm going to share this with the teachers and groups tomorrow, is, these are the insurance rates that we received that went out to the consortium, and these include the IBNR, it's $58. Is, if, we did not recommend, that's why this recommendation was put forth, is if we do nothing with our insurance, and the teachers say, you know what, give us a step and more money, add it to the base, then, and we do nothing with insurance, the employee, the district contribution to the HSA will be zero, and it will cost an employee $11 to be in the HSA. Basically, it's adding $58 to all of these numbers. So the buy-up for the base plan will be $164. For the middle plan, 209, and for the high plan to buy up will be $229. These numbers here fall in line with the numbers that I read in the neighboring district. That's one of the reasons we have such a significant increase, is the reality was, our consortium is made up of schools that we're a part of. One of the things that has been great is it's made up of schools, and so we get a seat at the table. The hard part about that is, you have superintendents who are, and I've openly said this, I'm on the finance committee now, is one of the problems is, when I go and sit on that board, I wear two hats. I have to be part of an insurance board of directors that has to succeed because it's not investors' money, it's school district money. Is, if you undercharge as a district or as an insurance consortium, Hillsborough's still on the hook to pay your bills. You know what I mean? You got to pay the bills. And so you want to, then you need to budget appropriately because we undercharge. We're so far below other neighboring districts and consortiums what they were charging, this is kind of a market correction. I really anticipate a 4% to 5% increase here on out, but this will be on the next one, if you go down to that side, is up or down with the new rates. That's what this equals. The recommendation to the board had been was for the district to pay $315,000 to buy it down by $58 a month, which each will $696 per employee for that year. So 696 times a 450, that's worth $315,000. That bought it down into, while this is still expensive, I don't disagree, this is a financial strain, it's going to move people that have been in a PPO plan, potentially the HSA, flat out from my perspective, and I will visit with people educationally, that's another thing that kind of worries me about tabling this, is insurance is hard for people to understand. The longer that we're waiting, and we're going to wait, we won't even prove it till the first week of May, people are going to have about a week to drive it, like, whoa, this is why I got to make a year-long decision. But we'll work through that. Is, when I look at this, this is a $2,500 deductible that I'm paying $107 a month. But my doctor's visits are locked in, whereas this is a $3,000 deductible that may not cost our employees anything, or would not, while we're not putting $98 a month in, we're putting 500-ish, but I'm saving $1,200 a year in premium. You know, that's a $1,700 swing for a $500 deductible difference. You know, in some cases, it'll be smarter to be in this, but it's going to be an education piece. So that said, I still recommend tabling it because people are concerned about it. And what we can't have as a district is distrust as far as, we're getting rammed something bad down, you know, the district's trying to pull one over on us, so they're not trying to do what's right for us. If people don't see it, we need to slow down and do it, we'll figure that out. So, and maybe the employees are like, hey, charge us more on the insurance piece, give us more cash, and we'll figure that out. Is, quite funny, I didn't, we didn't give them the opportunity to say that. But we're going to be some finite, a step is approximately how much, Ms. Gens?
Step wide.
Step.
Like 400,000.
Okay. So a step plus paying for this is about $700,000. Typically, on a given year, when we would add money to a base, you know, adding 500 to the base, you know, it would probably put us close to that number. Well, it is. We're essentially, if you think about it, if we kept the cap at 521, we're adding $696 to the base in theory. That's what this is. It's just we're putting it on the insurance. So, but again, that's what we need to visit with the staff about. Because different staff, not only our teachers, but our bus drivers and paras and all those, an hourly person, they can tend, this is huge. You know, if you think about it, this is a $10 an hour person, that's 10 hours of work or more. So we'll visit with them about it and try to get them to understand, we're going to offer input, maybe there's a better way to look at things, we're looking at potentially trying to use other benefits that we have as far as resources and turning them in there. One of the things too, I would also recommend, it's the next gen item.
The dental.
The dental, we table that. And one of the reasons we may want it, or that we table it, is to offer the employees, Ms. Gens and myself talked about this, but we felt like it was too short a time to, you know, we weren't having the time to be able to visit with all the teachers, is only about, I'm going to say it's about 60-ish less, it's under 100, well under 100 districts pay for vision. About 100 districts pay for dental, full dental, even in our own county, not every district does. If you scroll down a little bit, these are the rates here, and I'm going to share this. This is what we got from, they were extended, keep going, please, is some of the county comparisons so that our staff is able to see kind of where we're at. But one of the things is, our vision and our dental can buy an equal about $50. Do we want to not, as a district, save money, but is that something where everybody uses medical? Do we take that $50, do the employees want that $50 that the district allot's for vision and dental? Hey, put that on my medical. I don't wear glasses, I don't need that money, but everybody needs medical. And if you need the vision, then you pay for that. I mean, basically, the $50, what pot do you want to put it in? So we can talk about some of those items because that may switch. It may not for some people. So I wanted to kind of go through that, if you have kind of high level, if anyone would reach out to you or have questions. But obviously, there's a misunderstanding or not a full comprehension, I'll own that. So we need to put the brakes on this, present. Any questions on that?
Any questions we tabled?
One second.
For both items A and B?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of tabling items A and B? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on then to item C, which was the employee recognition dinner. I need a motion to approve hosting the 2020 staff recognition dinner.
On it.
Thank you, Renee.
Seth.
And Beth. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of approving this dinner? Raise your hand. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on then to the approval of the DDOC security service. I need a motion to approve the utilization of AT&amp;T's reactive denial of service protection for $3,612 per year and a per occurrence cost of $497 under a three-year agreement. That's a big motion, I'm sorry. Kind of know that, but lots of work. Thank you, Beth and John. Any discussion? Anything need to be clarified for you? Mr. Moore is here to help us with that. Everybody good?
What's the, what's the difference between proactive and aggressive, what would they do under proactive?
So reactive is, we're experiencing an issue, we call them and say, hey. Versus them calling us and saying, hey, we noticed this, and they're, I'm guessing it's more man-hours for them to just monitor. And also, they may be paying some cost on software to monitor, maybe that's where the cost is higher.
Because I mean, yeah, it's a huge goal.
Yeah, and so we're going to know if we have a problem, and the cost is so much lower. That's why I went with the reactive versus the proactive.
Okay. Clear as day. I know, I'm like, I'm sorry. All right, all in favor of approving this three-year agreement? Okay, very good. Next item has to do with the board docs. We need a motion to approve the agreement with board docs for the implementation for next school year, 2019-20, for transitioning to an online platform where the board meets. Thank you, Renee. And Second Jane. If you have any questions or issues, Dr. Isaacson is here to answer them and clear it up for you, or share anything.
Well, just kind of a general overview as to the why when you look at $12,000 is a lot of money. Is, looking at that is twofold of what we hope to accomplish is with Ms. Johnston retiring from her day job at central office, is she's still assisting us with the meetings, is this format allows us to be more efficient in putting together the board packet, us working together collectively to do it, but also the principals will be able to literally upload straight into the board packet. You'll have a password that you're able to see everything, you're able to put board your own notes in there, and literally links up policy during a board meeting, you'll literally be able to, if you want to know a prior vote on purchasing property or something of that nature, or anything, you can put in, purchase property, and it will pull up all the past historical board meetings, et cetera, once we get all that in there, ties to policy. So, and from a transparency issue, is the public will be able to go through there, so and see everything, a lot of local district, not local district, but districts around Fox and smaller districts, Lebanon, use this platform. Festus and Dunkland use another program web school tools, which is cheaper, but it's very labor-intensive, and they have an executive secretary in the office, the full time. So in the absence of that for us, while we're saving money, we're having to invest more back into just doing things a different way. And again, if it, after year one, we're like, hey, that isn't efficient, then we need to reevaluate, but it is, we're saving the funds from some of the salary.
So I'm assuming there will be training for us board members?
Yes. And there will be. It will be, it will, it's us too.
Sure. I'm looking at faces while I'm, okay. So we have a motion then to approve the board docs agreement. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving this new program? With fear in our hearts, right? Okay, we have another program to discuss. This is, we need a motion then to approve the frontline central and evaluation agreement for the next school year.
Second.
Thank you, Beth and John. You want to give a little overview of that too?
A little overview of this is currently we pay about twelve thousand, twelve and a half for the knee data tool. This program, our evaluation will be similar to knee from the standpoint, we're still gonna have the classroom evaluations and all that because that's outlined by Desi. But this is kind of bringing everything together as far as frontline central is an employee portal, which will bring a teacher's AESOP and leave accounts, their evaluation, if they wanna change their tax forms, it's all automated, which increases our efficiency at central office. And it's a one online platform. And so, a teacher will get their professional development, my learning plan, a principal will be able to go in and tie everything into their evaluation, and we get to design and kinda set that aside. So, in year one, it's about six thousand dollars more than knee. After that, it's a twelve thousand per year, so it's basically a wash. And we're picking up the employee central platform, so employees will be able to just have one login and have their evaluation and their substitute, everything, all of our employees.
So the knee program itself, just the program, is going away, but evaluations are still in place?
Evaluations are still in place and will be very similar. You may tweak some of the items, but if you look at the knee evaluation compared to the Desi, the standards are all the same. You know, one-two is one-two. As we still will go through multiple classroom evaluations, this will allow us to bring in, you know, attendance or bring in where you go to PD or those type, all encompassing. And we'll also be able to use the classified evaluation. So, we're gonna have to tweak how we do a student survey and those type of items and A teacher won't see a whole lot of significant difference, aside from where they log into it and maybe how we change some of the things at the end, what's all on the evaluation.
What wasn't clear to me at first on this was, as far as I understand it, that the cost is all upfront, six thousand, and then after that, it's basically the same as what we're using now.
Correct.
So, it's only really a six thousand upfront cost and that's it?
Yes.
To change orders.
To change orders.
And a lot of that is because of these companies, whenever you're doing the setup, they walk, you know, pay us to get everything rolling.
Okay. Any questions about this program, the frontline central? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve frontline central and evaluation agreement. All in favor to approve? Okay. Thank you very much for that approval. Item G has to do with another program with five lab and forecast to implement those, or that program in 2019 and 2020 as well. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Beth and John, second.
Don't we already get? This is part of the suite that we have from a financial standpoint. This is an academic component. One of the things that is tough for our administrators is from an academic side, and most of us can see in depth of this, but we're always reactionary. It's hard to have that conversation with a teacher as far as how kids did on assessment, provide feedback, because you have to download it into an Excel spreadsheet or go through, like on your D's and F's list, print a report, go through that, give Ms. Ringo a phone call and be like, hey, we separated. This here literally links to our infinite campus system and does a nightly poll. We can set up different thresholds to be like, I wanna know who has missed seven days, has three Fs, essentially, who's at risk and who's not succeeding, and it's a nightly poll. And so, you know, when it comes to working with our teachers to improve student achievement, the conversations, our principals have time for that, it's hard to gather all the information to go have the conversation. No, I gotta put it.
Put it all in their hands right now. It's in our administrative hands, so it's with our teachers, who's gonna give us the real time.
Gotcha, so this is a man on. I just, when I saw the first year of the teaching, I thought we already had it. No, that's to link everything up, and that's where we talk about, worked with Ms. Ringo and the infinite campus piece, because it's focusing on the data piece on student achievement. So we make the right decisions, is, here, is this, we talk about being self-evaluated, is this program working? And I was looking at the hard facts to make that, we think it's working and doing those
Okay. The motion on the floor then is to approve the five lab agreement with forecast five. All in favor? Okay, motion carries as well. Next item is to, I need a motion then to renew the MSBA membership for 2019-2020. Thank you, Beth. And some of the senators, ready?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I said my piece last year.
I don't. I remember. Any other thoughts? Okay. All in favor of approving, renewing with MSBA? Raise your hand, please. All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. The next item, you wanna preface this one before we make the motion, just so we're clear on what we're about to approve?
At the primary, we had an assistant to the principal position. The background on that is when we added that position, we had restructured, Ms. Castile was a process coordinator for us, so we established that to be a one-point-zero multiplier on the master's schedule. Okay? So in transitioning with our new special education center, we've discussed that position as what should the administration position look like? It's gonna be over at the elementary, they're gonna have evaluation duties of the special education teachers, but they're also gonna maintain the process coordinating roles. So as of yet, Ms. Castile's moved to the assistant principal role, we have not posted the process coordinator position for the primary. There will be a process coordinator at the primary and also work with primary and their intermediate. Why I haven't posted that is I don't know what'll happen with our current process coordinators. So this position is basically, they are, is taking the process coordinator salary that we're currently spending, it's kind of built into that, as well as over and above that is the administrative piece. Currently, the starting, why you see these different in salaries amount, fourteen to twenty thousand dollars, is the starting salary for the assistant to the principal, again, like I said, is whatever lane thirty of the master's degree is, and I don't have, I think it's like sixty-one thousand, is that number, is the master's plus thirty is sixty-eight thousand. So it's one-point-one of that, that's the difference in there. The reason we thought we need to change that to an assistant principal pay is because you have, while there's not the number of teachers to monitor, you're still gonna have behaviors every day, you're still gonna be dealing, your time is, you'll be dealing with big issues. There's potential, I mean, that program to grow, and we don't want that position to be the leaping spot. I'm gonna go do that job, to go to that job. And that's not what occurred with Ms. Castile, but you're gonna have that in that position. We wanna do our best to have consistency, because it's, it's gonna be a difficult situation, deal with behaviors and all this. You don't have the large number of supervision, but you are going to have, you're gonna be doing process coordinating, and it's gonna be a stressful job. And so, we feel that if we compensated at that assistant principal rate and look for somebody that's in SPECT, because it's gonna be assistant principal elementary, deal with SPECT, is, it's gonna be less likely that somebody serving that role is gonna be like, you know what, I wanna go for twenty thousand dollars more, go be the assistant principal, you know, in the district. Whereas, try to pry and buy that cotton, that's the thought process.
Okay, thank you. So qualifications, not only SPECT background, so they would have administrative degrees as well?
Oh, yeah. They have to have an administrative and a special education.
Okay, so this motion's gonna be a little tricky. We need a motion to approve the reclassification of the assistant to the principal special ed position to that of the assistant principal, assistant principal special education with compensation at the same level as an assistant principal in the elementary. Thank you, John and Beth. Was it right? I thought it was, was John and then Beth. I don't remember now. I thought I said it right, but. Okay. Any other discussion on that item? Okay, all in favor of approving the reclassification? Thank you very much. Item J has to do with change orders. We need a motion to approve the construction change orders of approximately nine thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars. Thank you, Jane. And Angie. Any issues with those change orders? Numbers have definitely gotten smaller.
Yes.
That's that. Okay, all in favor of approving these change orders? Raise your hand, please. All right, motion carries. Next item is a bus lease renewal. We want to, a motion to approve the continued participation in the ECSE reimbursement program and renew the lease for the two ECSE buses with a one-year lease and then reevaluating again in January.
Anyone motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Jane, and second, Beth. Okay, I don't, I don't. Okay. Are there any questions about that? We're wanting to renew the lease and then reevaluate again in January.
Says it reimburses a hundred percent the following year?
Yes.
Correct. So, it, is there a, I mean, this is no cost right now, right? Is it?
No, we, I mean, we're just a year behind of recouping our lease payment. That's the only downside. And next year, we'll look and see if we can get a new one. These are the original ones we started with on the lease.
Correct.
Trade out for different ones. There's no increase as well. All right. You can change it? My understanding. Okay. So, we have a motion then to approve this lease renewal and then to reevaluate later. All in favor? All right, very good.
Move to it.
Not yet. We added to the agenda. Sorry. I know. We need a motion to approve the implementation of the medical detectives as a new class and permission to apply for a technology grant from Desi. This is for the junior high. Thank you, Angie, second. Oh, Rob was first.
Rob was first.
And then, okay. I said second, Angie, because you said something. Okay. And I believe we talked about this class already. Do the link?
Actually, this is twofold. We're asking to add the class, which is in the strand of the project, in addition to apply for the grant, because it is a fifty-fifty grant.
Yeah.
But he has funds within his allocation for the junior high.
So we can cost the district necessarily additional. Okay, very good.
Can we pause this?
Yeah, can we go? That would be fun.
Audit.
Yeah. Just at least observe. Okay. Everybody good then? All right, we need a motion then to, oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote then on the motion to implement the medical detectives and give permission for the grant. All in favor? Okay, very good. Now, we also, as a group, need to come up with a date for our May meeting. I was looking at the sixth or the seventh for a special meeting, because you have to have time to get things submitted for insurance, correct?
That's correct.
The sixth is the Monday, the seventh is the Tuesday, I don't know what works better, but we just kinda need a general consensus, you know, before we discuss this evening.
Monday's better for you?
For you? Okay.
But that doesn't mean, I now vote Tuesday. And I'm open either day.
What time are you thinking?
Well, probably, is that, is that enough time, Jane, for you to give?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that would be great. Or whatever, you guys, I'm flexible on Monday, sometimes, so if you guys want to come earlier, I don't care.
Anybody else have an issue with either of those days? Right, Monday would be helpful to get it, gives you a week before?
Yes.
Open enrollment.
And then we'll plan on executive and an open, probably do open first and then executive in case there is no need, because it'll be some hiring if we get, this is the time of year where people will resign and then allow us to hire them.
Okay, so we are planning a special meeting then on May sixth, Monday at six P.M. Okay? So we just need the consensus for that, we don't have to vote on that. All right. That then concludes our meeting. I need John, a motion and a second? Second? Okay. All in favor of a journey? There we go. Thank you for attending this evening. Meeting adjourned.
Hold on, I'm trying to get a hundred, I know. Does it, we're going to watch the TV?
Yeah. So, yeah. You have to see the future. For which?
I used to tell my kids, even my, like, then I had a crystal ball. They believed.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.